Okay. So I'll start this work session and we'll start out with the Home Energy Score Program, which will be presented by Peter Pastrelly and Natalie Rogers. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Gamba. Good evening. I'm Peter Pastrelly, the Public Works Director, and with me tonight is Natalie Rogers, our Climate Action and Sustainability Coordinator. One of the strategies that we identified in our Climate Action Plan that we adopted last October was adopting and implementing a Home Energy Score. It was part of our Building and Energy section. So over the last probably four, four or five months, we've been working on putting together a program for consideration. We spent some time looking at the programs that were out there, and Portland, of course, as you know, recently adopted a program that went into effect in January of 2018. So with that in mind, we, we really took a lot harder look at Portland's, and we've modeled our program and scaled our program based off of Portland's program. There certainly are some things that are different from our community than Portland's in terms of size, being one of them, and also some of the owner and renter ratios in the community. I mean, they're similar to some extent, but there's some differences there. Some of the things that I think we're looking for some, some guidance and feedback are, are some of the compliance schedules that we've identified in, in, in the program, perhaps some exemptions that we've identified in the program. We've tried to model it as closely as Portland's for ease of implementation and to make sure that the real estate industry in the area has something that's easy to, to understand and is not significantly different than what is already out there, that, that Portland's already adopted. Portland, I think, has around 9,000 homes on the market annually. Is that what it is?
Roughly around here.
Roughly, and we're thinking we're about 10% of that. The program that Natalie's going to talk about, we've, we want to put something together that's replicable and affordable for, for the community. So with that in mind, I'm going to turn it over to Natalie. Natalie's going to dig down into some of the details and we can have a discussion about the Home Energy Score.
Cool.
Awesome. Well, hi, guys. I'm Natalie, Climate Action Sustainability Coordinator. So I'm just going to step you guys through real quick, some of, just reminding us of our action goals and our climate action plan and the relevance of the Home Energy Score Program. And then I'm going to walk through what is a Home Energy Score Program, followed by how a framework for Milwaukee would look, and then just a little bit about Portland as a case study for the Home Energy Score Program. So as you're probably familiar, we have three carbon goals for the city. The first being net zero electricity, carbon emissions from electricity by 2035, followed by net zero carbon emissions from building energy of all fuel types by 2040, and then complete carbon neutrality as a city by 2050. And that's important because, as you can see, we, as a community, for our sector-based emissions, those sorts of emissions that we create as a community and can track within our community, or can, yes, as can track within our community, you can see it's roughly about 260,000 metric tons of CO2. And of that, 18% comes from the residential energy sector. So that is energy that is tied to our community's homes and our residents. So in our, as Peter mentioned, in our mitigation strategies for our Building Energy and Efficiency Section in the Climate Action Plan, we specifically call out adopting a commercial and residential building energy score program based on the city of Portland's. So our Climate Action Plan was adopted in October of 2018, and Portland initiated their Home Energy Score Program in January of 2018. So this was something that was pretty fresh, but we were seeing it within the Portland community, and it looked like an opportunistic time to implement, implement it within Milwaukee. Our contractors, The Good Company, estimated about 5,800 tons of metric, metric tons of CO2 equivalence reduction for both commercial and residential energy scoring. And we did, using Earth Advantage and Rocky Mountain Institute, who are two kind of energy efficiency, building energy-related nonprofits, we did do some estimations on a resident, specifically a Home Energy Score Program, which I'll share with you, but that's about on par for what that value is.
So they think that reduction comes from just the score program?
So this is, this is from the Climate Action Plan, and that's both commercial and residential scoring, mimicking Portland's programs that they currently had in 2018.
But the programs don't actually make anybody change anything, right?
Well, yes.
No, they don't, but it, 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 it provides incentive and information for people, that value proposition for buyers and sellers to...
Negotiate.
To negotiate and perhaps even make changes to their homes. You know, if you're, if you're a seller, if you're a homeowner, and you're on, on the line of like, man, do I, do I want to replace my, my furnace now? Because we might be moving in five or six years. Well, maybe it makes sense to do it because there's value added to that, that you might be picked up in, in the, in the home market.
And we'll break down some of those, those estimated carbon reductions in just a little bit. So residential energy uses, as we mentioned, is around 18% of our sector-based carbon emissions. Most of that comes from the energy efficiency of one's home. So energy efficiency, simply put, is using less energy to perform the same task. What that means is that making sure your systems are efficient in the ways that they're processing both electricity, natural gas, and other fuel types to either heat your home, or insulate your home, or heat your water. So building energy efficiency use, though, unfortunately, is really difficult to see because some of the strongest measures to make a building energy efficient is hidden within the envelope of the building, the walls of the building. So that's stuff like insulation. So from the naked eye, you walk into a building, you probably can't tell how energy efficient it is until you start looking at those utility bills over time, or if you can have access to some of those home assets, like a furnace, and you can see if it's designated like Energy Star, or some of those similar certifications. So one aspect of home energy reports, or any sort of energy efficiency report, is kind of making that information transparent, right? Taking the hidden energy efficiency of a building and making it so it's clearly readable information for the, the common person to come in and actually be able to see how energy efficient a home is without that, like institutional knowledge coming from an expert. And you can see down there, I just have some images of energy efficiency in terms of insulation, and the one on the right can just show you how, how windows are an aspect of energy efficiency. However, compared to insulation, they're very small. So coming from that, that knowledge, that information about energy efficiency can help guide a market and better inform buyers and homeowners, the U.S. Department of Energy in, in, within their Better Buildings Initiative, which started in 2012, I believe, they developed a methodology called the U.S. Department of Energy Home Energy Score. And so that, the Home Energy Score is a methodology that's voluntary for either cities, states, or any sort of community program to use, following a few sets of requirements. But the whole purpose of it is that it's a very general assessment of energy efficiency, right? It doesn't go into the real depths of a building simply because it's supposed to be replicable and it's supposed to be affordable. So you're supposed to be able to use it with any type of construction, they say, from a straw house to a brick house, right? And it's supposed to be able to use anywhere across the nation. So I know we received a question about historical homes, whether or not historical homes are by default not energy efficient. There's a lot of factors that make them up, but a lot of times you mentioned brick houses, historical homes being brick. So that is actually accommodated in this methodology, understanding that the insulation type of the building material has a, has a play in the energy efficiency of the building.
So like, that chart has orientation, has attic and roof, it has some things that could get to features in historic homes, but I mean, before we had air conditioning, homes were built to be cooler. They were built with bigger overhangs and wraparound porches because that shaded the windows and you didn't have...
Right.
As much sun on the house. So does this methodology take that into account?
So the external features of the house, such as overhangs and landscaping, like trees, that is not included in the methodology. However, talking to somebody who performs these assessments, they said that that has actual minimal effects on the scores that they'd be seeing. And what it does do, though, is complicate the process to get one of these assessments, increases the time, which therefore increases the cost, and makes it more difficult to replicate across multiple homes for a cheaper cost. He also, the, we talked to an assessor, and he said that, Jason from Earth Advantage, he said that even in comparison to a, a energy audit, which is more expensive, does a blower door test and other measures, these home energy scores are fairly consistent with even the more expansive testings and giving you pretty similar information at a much lower cost as well. And as you can see here, and you pointed out, this is kind of a pyramid that shows what these home energy scores actually assess, and that's the assets of the home. So that's stuff that's built within the home, as well as the fixed features. It's not operational behavior. And the importance of that is that when you, as a potential home buyer, or somebody who's interested in improving your house, want to look to see what retrofits you should make, you're not looking at what behaviors were previously made, right? Somebody turning off their lights when they walk out of the room, or closing the windows in the hottest times of the day. That's not what's going to be taken into account in these home energy scores. What is there is the fixed features, so that when you're buying that house, you know what you're getting into. And that's what the estimated energy usage and the estimated energy costs and carbon emissions are also based off of, these home assets.
And if I, if I can add one thing, with the exception of the addition of solar, so you, there are points associated with the addition of solar to our home that gives you, could give you a better score. It is neutral in terms of what fuel you're using to heat and cool your home. So it doesn't factor, that does not factor in what the score is. It's all based on that equipment and infrastructure that you have in the home.
Which is a good point to make because as we're looking to promote renewables within the community, electrification of systems is something that we're hoping will happen. A lot of energy-efficient appliances actually use natural gas. And so that is something where if we're trying to both spread the message of energy efficiency, but also electrification, we may have to further define those points moving forward. But overall, the importance of energy efficiency still decreases community carbon emissions and also improves the cost of owning a home if it's more energy efficient.
So even in their carbon calculation, they're not taking into the fact that...
They are.
The methane upstream losses if you're completely a natural gas building as opposed to a completely electric building.
We'll point that out. They do break down the carbon emissions by fuel type.
But they, the score that you get is not based on...
It's purely based on economics rather than...
It's based off of the energy efficiency. So how the home uses energy to heat and cool it, it's, it's not based on what source you're using.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is, is there a way that we, is there flexibility or latitude in how the program works that we, we could add points or that sort of thing? So the, the scorecard, so I'll talk about how, how, what scorecard we'll be using in the partnerships of this framework, but essentially, we're partnering with U.S., with Oregon Department of Energy. And that's because, to use U.S. Department of Energy methodology, there's certain program requirements you have to meet for quality assurance and number of scores. And so by partnering with Oregon Department of Energy as a proxy partner, we can kind of in aggregate meet those requirements. So we are somewhat limited to what the state is wanting to put on the scorecard. However, the state has done a fantastic job of expanding upon Portland's scorecard and including, with, with the help from Portland, and including more information on the scorecard to touch on some of these topics, including breaking apart the carbon emissions by fuel type. So, but, but we will be moving forward, be participating in a stakeholder group, kind of a, a working technical group with Oregon Department of Energy, to potentially have influence on these scorecards moving forward and how the programs are developed. So I just wanted to quickly touch on what is consistent in the scorecards. So as Peter mentioned, there's an easy under, to understand score from one to 10 that is independent of fuel type, but what it's focused on is the asset energy efficiency, not the owner behavior or best practices. I highlight that insulation is key because in this score, insulation makes the most amount of difference in the methodology, which is great for historical homes because insulation is hidden, it doesn't affect the features, the external features of the house. And age of the home is not considered in the score, and then there's a focus on building construction. So energy efficiency upgrades can be discreet. By default, an old home is not, not energy efficient. Portland mentioned a case where they had an 1890s home that scored a 10 on, on these home energy scores. There are some difficulties, of course, with, with upgrading these homes to that level, but it's possible. And that's part, part of the buyer and consumer protection, the information that comes from these home energy scores, which is really beneficial. Just as you would want to know if your home is on a historic registry when you're about to buy it, you might also want to know how energy efficient it is. So you see the score. There's also a rough energy cost per year based on the assets of the home. So this is dependent on that year's utility rates. So they talk to, you know, for our region, it'd be PGE Northwest Natural, get the average rates, look at the assets of the home, and then get a projected cost. This also includes solar and renewables, so if you're generating power on site, your energy costs go down in those calculations.
And so something I read, I don't know if it was in this packet or in the, the stuff for your open house, but said that they're not actually looking at your utility bills.
No.
They're running some sort of generic, like this house should be...
Right. And that's because, well, that's because if you are energy conscious in your own home, And so, estimating your energy usage based on your past behavior isn't always the best projection of what that home will perform. And it also hides that personal identifying information that you might not want on your utility bills shared with people through the methodology because these scorecards are publicly available, right? So, people can search them and have that information.
One other thing, if I could add to that, that energy cost. So, Earth Advantage or Oregon Department of Energy, they update those energy costs annually. And that's reflected on the score sheet once it's in the green registry. So, that sheet for that home gets an updated score, updated energy cost every year. Not a score, but an updated energy cost.
And the score was good for six years or something?
The scorecard is good for eight years, and then two years if you're relisting the house for when you need to recalculate it based on the most recent energy usage, which you can do for free. So, it's just essentially you need to go into the database, re-upload your score to see what, based on the average rate of this year of 2020, 2021, and what that score and cost would be. The score shouldn't change, I believe, it's just the energy costs that will change. There's also carbon emissions by fuel type. So, you can see there, at the very bottom, underneath those clouds, it will have values for the carbon emissions, how many, the quantity. Also, in that, adjusting that range, zero to fifteen tons per year or so, that will change based on how the state wants to move the scorecard forward, which we will be part of those discussions.
So, sorry, can I just go back to that real quick? So, when the, it's talking about the carbon footprint calculation, so, like, our house has a natural gas furnace that's rated eighty percent. I know it needs to be replaced, we don't have the money just yet. But, that's not going to look at how we used it or previous people used it. It's going to say, okay, so, an average user with an eighty percent efficient gas furnace would
Yes.
have this X number of carbon emissions.
Absolutely, yeah.
Based on the square footage of the house?
Yeah, so they'll take into the square footage of the house, amount of heating space. Larger homes, speaking of historic homes, actually, larger homes are a better indicator of receiving a lower score simply because there's more space to heat and more space to keep insulated. So, larger homes, for the same energy-efficient furnace, may score differently than a smaller house. But, yes, the asset, as long as it's, they're looking at the asset and the energy efficiency of that asset, and generally score that way.
Thanks.
And then, recommended retrofits. And the important thing here is that these are all with ten-year payoffs, and there's also additional energy improvements. So, the top one are the priority ones with ten-year payoffs that they recommend as a priority action. The bottom ones are also additional information because they realize that people want more information on what potential things they can change in their home, be it small changes or larger, like, replacing windows. But, what I wanted to say here was that there's, they rarely suggest replacing windows simply because windows will not improve score as better, as best as insulation. And for these improvements, there are financing options available. So, Fannie Mae, FHA, there's always, both of these programs have, like, debt-to-income extensions, ratio extensions, or loan programs, Green Street Lending, I believe, one from Amquah. There's also, Energy Trust of Oregon has incentives that align with these improvements. And by doing a home energy scorecard, you can go with your mortgage and say, I want to tack this on as this loan option. So, essentially, it's providing the information at that time of mortgage or sale where you can already wrap in some of these improvement options, which is the benefit of having it in the listing process of a home.
Question, something you just said, because it runs counter to something I was told by a contractor. He said that replacing windows isn't as valuable as insulation in walls. When he was talking about trying to build passive house buildings, he said they would do all these things, do all these things, do all these things, and they'd get this great score right up till you got to the hole in the wall, meaning the windows. And then, they are all the same, didn't matter. If you had bad windows, you were not going to get an energy-efficient building straight up. So, that, I mean, and if you think about the difference between a single pane and the new triple pane windows, it's significant.
It is, and, well, and the one thing that I would mention there, the passive house methodology for, you know, is completely different than the home energy score methodology that we're looking at.
Sure, but the point remains the same, right? What you do in the walls is great, you get this great insulative value, but if you have a big gaping hole in the wall, it really doesn't matter how thick your walls are.
Well, and, the discussion we had with Earth Advantage and Oregon Department of Energy, it's not just the walls that need to be insulated, it's also the ceilings and the crawl spaces. And people often overlook those spaces to do that. But, back to your question about the windows, I think the other part of the window calculation is the cost to replace windows.
That, that calculation, I believe.
So, this is the part, you know, they look at what's the return on investment over the ten years, and those windows, a full replacement of all your windows in your homes, it's hard to get that payback in the ten years.
Well, and the difference in our value, the difference in our values from very poor insulation to the best on the market is much, it's a wider gap than a single pane window to a triple pane window. But, the big problem with windows is the gaps, you're right, the gaps around the windows, a lot of single pane windows are drafty. And that ties into the building envelope and the fact that ceiling, and actually, they even just recommend doing like a smoke test in your own home for energy efficiency is some of the most, would create the most improvements in the energy efficiency of your home. But, it is very comprehensive, there's a lot of features that add up to how a home is energy efficient, which is why a single handout that's easy to read might be more beneficial for someone who doesn't have that experience with energy efficiency and doesn't understand why should I not go for windows, or why should I go for windows and not insulation. And that's information that's not readily available even through a home inspection because a lot of times they try to remain neutral, and they'll recommend some adjustments, but they can't factor in utility costs and create these calculations for you.
Well, the other question here is, if you recommend, yes, it's, you know, you save two hundred and eighty-five dollars a year by doing these upgrades, but what's the, that's the, but are we calculating for the embedded energy costs of those replacements? Like, windows are a prime example, there are study after study that say, you know, that the the energy saved by upgrading your windows is not as much as the energy consumed by building the new windows and putting those old windows in the landfill. So, you know, how do we measure for that kind of thing?
Yeah, that's a really good question, and that was one that we asked at our forum with the group that we had. And there was some discussion that, there's been some studies that have looked into the embedded cost of energy in replacing, and what's, you know, how do things balance out? But, there wasn't really a robust body of literature that looked at that. And the score that you have here does not reflect that at all. That what's the cost of what I have versus what I'm going to replace?
That's a hard thing to calculate.
And then, finally, I just wanted to show you that with those energy improvements and retrofits, they do give you a projected new score and potential energy savings. And, once again, all of these retrofits that they suggest, they're all optional, right? The home, whoever sees this scorecard, either the homeowner or the potential buyer, does not need to make, there's no requirement for them to make these upgrades. It's just supposed to be strengthening that consumer protection, knowing what you're getting into before you buy, and providing that information at a convenient time, especially if you're already going through the loan process, that these options are available for you.
And if I could just tie back into your question there, Lisa, a little bit. So, you know, this program here, and Natalie and I both mentioned, you know, the idea behind it, it's, of course, sort of mass implementation, and it's need to, it needs to be replicable and affordable. So, when you start to really sort of dig down and drill down into, you know, more into each specific home, it becomes hard, it becomes more expensive. You know, the difference from an assessment, which is, you know, in that one fifty to two hundred dollar range where you're not doing blower tests and smoke tests, you know, it's those, the home energy audit, which, some of the assessment group that we had here, they say they don't even do those anymore because nobody can afford them. So, you know, they've got tools sitting in their garage that they don't use to do home energy audits because the assessment, as Natalie mentioned, pretty much gets you to the same point in terms of how your home looks. It might be off a few points here or there, but generally, for the most part, the aggregate homes, you know, they come in to where they should be.
Well, and it seems that part, I mean, my understanding of part of our interest in doing this in Milwaukee is modeling good behavior and pushing this toward becoming the norm for the whole state of Oregon. And if Portland can do it, and we can do it, everybody else in between ought to be able to do it, and so, we have to make it accessible.
Yeah, and I've, you know, I'm talking to Earth Advantage and Oregon Department of Energy. Milwaukee is kind of on the front of a wave of a lot of other small communities who are interested in implementing a home energy score program. I believe Hood River Bend, all these other communities who are also looking at climate action plans and energy plans are looking at home energy score plans through working in a Oregon Department of Energy partnership. And then, tying it back to Milwaukee and why we're interested in this program is that, you know, it's within our climate action plan, and the goal is that it will help us reach our climate goals. Community carbon emissions are a hard thing to manage, simply because it's a lot of personal behaviors, and you can't require people to do a lot when it comes to their operational behaviors of their own home, right? So, mediating their own energy usage within their home. At least this information will help us make some of those carbon reductions that we're hoping to see within our climate action plan. So, I mentioned this calculator, and I also included it in the staff report. So, this is from Earth Advantage and Rocky Mountain Institute. They've been doing a lot of work helping communities around the nation look at home energy scores and see how it'll impact their communities. They created this impact calculator. It runs off of a few assumptions, but that follows kind of the literature that we're seeing from energy certification processes. So, in this calculator, assuming twenty percent of homes make suggested retrofits, which comes about in the middle of a U.S. Department of Energy literature review on energy certification programs. That means about a hundred and forty homes in Milwaukee a year would make a retrofit for energy efficiency. That's a savings of over fourteen hundred million BTU of energy, which is kind of a measurement of energy usage. That's eighty-one tons of carbon dioxide a year. And by 2050, which is our community-wide carbon goal, that could save us about twenty-four hundred tons of CO2, which, as I mentioned, is on par for our fifty-eight hundred, I believe, or fifty-six hundred estimation from the Good Company from our climate action plan. And I do also want to say that this is with, all these calculations, it's like back-of-the-envelope calculations I just did based on this tool. And this is assuming stagnant growth of sales in Milwaukee. We're assuming there's going to be more homes in Milwaukee, there's going to be more home sales. This potentially could increase amount of savings from that. And it also could influence operational behavior, right? If you're moving into a home that has a low energy efficiency, you might by default know that you need to make sure you switch off the lights before you leave the room because you know your home isn't very energy efficient.
If I can, I was just going to add too, there's some other co-benefits there that tie into our climate action plan in terms of the energy efficiency component, not just the greenhouse gas emissions, but that energy efficiency piece that, you know, that reduction of energy use in our community helps us get to our targets, helps the region and the state in terms of, that means there's less, you know, generation assets that need to be constructed. So, you know, that's an important part of that equation as well.
So, the base that they start from doing the assessment, that triangle you had that had all the features of the home, does that, I mean, the Oregon building codes and what they've required has changed over time. So, you know, fifty years ago, they probably didn't require insulation. I bought a ninety-year-old house that had zero insulation anywhere in the house when I bought it. It had been built as a summer house, and that was part of why
There was probably newspaper in the walls.
But, now houses presumably have to have insulation. So, is, do they start with the year of the house and what the building code required at that point?
So, what they'll do is based on the construction type, they'll have, come in knowing what, say, a nineteen ninety-five stick home, right? They'll know how that was constructed, and then they'll ask the homeowner, have you done any upgrades? And if the homeowner has documentation that they've added more insulation, then they'll go based off of that documentation. If the homeowner doesn't have that information, they'll say, based on the average nineteen ninety-five stick home and the energy code of that year, this is what it would have.
So, you have to show documentation, there's no actual inspection if the homeowner does not have those receipts, I mean
So, so what, they don't, it's similar to a regular home inspection, but they don't open walls. So, it's for stuff like, like, they can see if there's a triple pane window, but they can't tell if somebody made insulation improvements or
But, when insulation is so important, it seems like that, that we have to accommodate that, like, that doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, the score, especially
Wouldn't they, like, look in the crawl space?
So, they can do an observation of it, and usually you will have, like, if you go through a contractor to get increased, or like insulation blown into your walls, you will have a documentation, like, piece of paper that says that you got it done. The reason why they don't open the walls is because, once again, that would increase the cost of this assessment. It's supposed to be kept very basic, about forty-five minutes is how long these assessments usually take, up to an hour and fifteen minutes with data entry. So, it's supposed to be quick.
A two or three hundred dollar price tag on that, right?
Right, well, and then if you do a full energy audit and you open up walls, then all of a sudden, there's the inconvenience if you're trying to sell your home and now you're opening up walls to show what insulation you have. And once, if you find that paperwork later, it's easy to update those scores, and a lot of assessment companies will just do that.
But, how long, I mean, is there a time limit or something? For instance, I mean, when I bought my house in 2005, it had little insulation, and it had metal windows, the whole place was horribly drafty and, I mean, just really frigid, you know? So, I got all that taken care of and had additional insulation added every place I could, and got the new windows and doors and new floors, blah, blah, blah. So, is there a time limit on that? I mean, if somebody did an energy audit on my house right now, would they say, oh, that's great for now, but five years from now, you need to do this again and that again, or whatever?
That all depends on the federal methodology. If they update the federal methodology for it at any point, then the scores would change. But, it's not, it's not like they're looking at insulation of a certain thickness put in now versus five years from now and changing it unless it has a different insulation in our value.
The scores are good for eight years.
Yeah.
You're not required to do any work to make any improvements. They're just recommended upgrades and improvements.
But, it requires you to get that done if you're considering selling it.
No, no, not at all.
No, well, it requires you to get the energy score done if you plan on, or you're thinking about
Yeah, the requirement, if you're, the requirement would be if you're going to list a house, at the time of listing, that you have a home energy score. But, it doesn't require the property owner to make any improvements. So, it's just, it's sort of that transparent, it's sort of that transparency. It's like when you go buy a car, you look, how many miles, how many miles per gallon am I going to get on that car? It's got all that information there. So, this one tells you this is what the score is, or this is the Energy Star on your refrigerator. This is how much energy my refrigerator is going to use, or my water heater is going to use. So, it's that sort of transparent information that, that's being provided.
And we'll go over the program framework in just a little bit, too. I just want to make sure that we understand why we're interested in a program like this before we kind of talk about what the details would be.
In the written communication that we got from the citizen, Mr. Clark, he also mentioned that right now, there's, you know, sellers are encouraged to get, in fact, all will have to get, you know, a comprehensive inspection report and whatever, so. But, I know it doesn't go into some of these things, but it, I guess his point is, and maybe the point would be, that it seems to satisfy a lot of those same type of things.
So, for home inspections, you're not required to get a home inspection. And on top of that, at the point you're getting a home inspection, a comprehensive one would be fairly expensive. But, then also, you're already committed to that sale in some essence, you've already invested in that home sale, like, process. The benefit of a home energy scorecard is that you get this when you list the house. So, when you're browsing homes, and this could depend on your own values, if you really value energy efficiency, or you're looking at the affordability of a home and what your month-to-month will be, when you're browsing those houses, you'll have the scorecards for each of those homes. So, it can be just kind of additional information, just as you know how many bedrooms and bathrooms would be in that house, you know what the energy efficiency of the home is before you commit towards an inspection.
So, would that be something different than you browsing those listings now and it says Energy Star Efficient?
Because the Energy Star is actually a voluntary certification that appliances will go through. There's also the Energy Performance Score, which is Energy Trust of Oregon's. But, they don't, that's not required at all, that's another voluntary program. A lot of homes actually don't engage in that program unless they A lot of homes actually don't, um, engage in that program unless they know that they're going to be energy efficient by build type. Um, and it's also, um, right now, Portland's providing exceptions to homes with energy star, uh, or Energy Trust of Oregon EPS, but they're removing that in 2020.
And I wanted you to explain a little bit about that, yeah. I saw that in the.
Um, from my understanding, it's, uh, EPS scores are going to do their own conversions into a home energy score in their, their own methodology. So that way, when you're getting an energy performance score, you're automatically going to get a home energy score. So they're not going to exclude homes with an EPS because they will have that score.
Got it.
Going through that process.
And if they're, if they're getting an EPS, they're basically doing an energy audit.
Yes, yeah.
Several steps more extensive than.
Yes.
And if, if, if I can mention one more thing on that inspection though. So the home inspection is more look, looking at the functionality of the systems at your home or things working and also the safety of the home. Are there any things that might be, you know, unsafe or dangerous or, you know, it, it looks at that, that sort of piece. It doesn't look at the energy efficiency component of the home.
Yeah, I mean, we just, we didn't buy a house that long ago and it was, there was nothing in the conversation about energy efficiency. I got information about energy efficiency because I was interested. And so I called the utilities and I looked up the model number of the, the water heater and, and all of that, so, but I had to do all that work and I'm way more motivated than the average home buyer. So I think.
Perfect segue into, it increases our understanding of the potential energy use and cost of a home. So this is actually polled from the Realtors and Sustainability 2017 Report. Essentially, 71% of Realtors said that energy efficiency promotion in listings was important to clients. Um, as along with 70, 79% said utility, utility bills, but 39% of Realtors said they were not comfortable explaining home performance to clients. And going back to the, the inspections, you don't get your estimated utility costs from those inspections either. They don't pull the current utility rates on anything and put them in the inspection. And they also don't suggest retrofits specifically for energy efficiency in those inspections. A lot of times they'll look and they'll say, oh, you have knob and tube electric or you have, you know, not a lot of insulation in your attic, but they don't, this, a home energy score actually provides you a pathway to financing as well. And it's also a clear to understand list of prioritized retrofits for energy efficiency specifically. While home, like a home inspection, my home inspection was saying, oh, you have galvanized plumbing. That should be your first primary thing, simply because he's a contractor by trade and he knows what will fail in my home first. And then finally, um, the goal of a home energy score program on a regional scale is that it's going to drive the market for energy efficient homes. With more educated buyers, we're hoping that people start to look at energy efficiency as a component of the home purchase, right? So knowing what you're getting into with the value of wanting to spend less on your utility bills and have a more energy efficient home. So the US Department of Energy did a literature review of energy certification, um, processes. So homes that were energy efficient certified. And they found that there's a two to 6% premium for designated energy efficient homes and that they sold 18 to 89 days faster. Um, and another important finding too, in a 2016 study showed that poor ratings don't discourage home purposes, but do purchases, but do inform energy upgrades. So simply put, if you're interested in energy efficiency, you want to know that information and then you will make changes based on that information. If you do not care about energy efficiency, a bad energy score is not going to dissuade you from that house. Or there's other features of the home that you might compel you to purchase that house instead.
So that gets me to, I had, I had posted, uh, something about the forum last week, um, to Facebook and a friend of mine who used to live here in Milwaukee in an older home and then lived in northeast Portland in an older home and has since built a new home, um, commented about her experience with Portland's energy score. And she was very, just, she found it just completely irrelevant for older homes. And, um, she, uh, she said they, you know, wanted her to, uh, they suggested she do all these upgrades to, um, pull out walls and, and insulate her ductwork was the main thing, I guess, for a $200 a year, uh, savings. She wasn't going to do that in a 1938 home and she got four offers the first weekend. And she was like, you know, to me, it was just, uh, you know, it's a, it's a project to make work for these contractors who do the home scores. You know, she was very, uh, she did not find it value-added for her, you know, in her sales. Nobody cared, none of her purchasers cared, obviously.
Well, and it depends, I would say, on the, the buyer's own values and interests. And, you know, we, we come at it as a, as a year for the cost, right? So the $200 a year savings. What you're doing when you are making these energy efficiency, uh, related retrofits is you're taking that cost savings and you're making a one-time large investment, knowing that you're going to be decreasing those energy rates and you're going to end up both reducing your carbon emissions, but also ending in a more energy efficient home in the long run. If your personal values are not, uh, one that you value maybe carbon emissions and energy efficiency and you have those, that extra dollar to spend per month on utility bills, you probably, that, you know, that's not, Portland market's pretty hot, same with the Milwaukee market. It's not going to dissuade you from buying that house. But if you happen to be really interested in minimizing your carbon impact or really keeping that monthly utility bill tight and small, when you're looking at homes, you might not want to pick a one or a two. You might move towards a three or a four. And I think that's the cool part about this program is it's not restrictive for the buyer. It's just empowering the buyer with more information so that they, they can make a smarter purchase based on what they want out of home.
I actually think Peter's car analogy holds true for historic homes as well, you know? If you're buying a class, if you're looking for a classic car, that's what you're in the market for, miles per gallon is probably not going to be super high on your list of things that you're yay or nay on a car for. You're looking at a whole host of other things that you want and same for the person who's selling the classic car. So, but, you know, you might still want to know, or in the average auto market, the average buyer of a car ought to, I think, have the right to know what the miles per gallon, um, is for, for any given car. So I, I think that, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and if I could add, the purchasers of the home may not have been interested in those energy improvements, but, or upgrades, but they could have taken the home energy score and actually got financing to make those improvements and, and mortgaged and put that in their, and, and put, replace their furnace and water heater as part of their home purchase.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, if this program had been available when we bought our house, we probably would have done exactly that and just gotten rid of the, the gas furnace that is 20 years old and needs to go.
Right, yeah, no, it's, it's empowering to have that information. Um, and yes, I think I would have made a different home purchase myself, but. Too invested now. Uh, okay, so I'm just going to run through a brief framework. And as Peter mentioned, we're trying to, um, make this program as similar to Portland's simply because Portland did a fantastic job of having a scoping process, working with the real estate community, industry community, assessors and, uh, Portland residents and community residents on what a framework would look like that accommodates multiple needs of those communities. And it also, having a program that matches Portland's as closely as possible would minimize the confusion across jurisdictional lines for Realtors who often work in both communities, um, as well as for home, uh, people who are listing their home, right? Because they might have heard information from their friends and they're, you know, following a similar footprint. Um, so the home energy score program, as I mentioned, was created by US Department of Energy. What we would do is we would partner with Oregon Department of Energy to ensure the quality assurance and the score numbers. You're usually like a threshold of you need at least 500 scores per year or something is met for that, uh, to use this methodology. Um, Earth Advantage is the current contractor that does the quality assurance, database management for these home energy scores as well as assessor training. Um, and there is a three-tiered assessor training process. So assessors actually do have to go through a pretty, um, intense certification process to be able to perform these assessments. And there's also, uh, minimization of conflicts of interest. Like, I believe certain, like, a Realtor cannot become an assessor simply because they're trying, they're incentivized to sell that home.
There's certain pre-qualifications that you have to have before you can even start the assess, the assessment program. And there's a, a federal level, a state level, and then a program level that, uh, Earth Advantage does. So there's like three certification steps that people that go out to get their assess, their assessor's certification have to go through. And if you did it all at once, there's, uh, it's, it's about a six-week-long course, course load to, to do.
And so these are typically individual people who just say, I'm going to be an assessor, like the building inspectors are, or are they companies?
Some, a lot of times they're companies who are offering it as a service. Sometimes they're home contractors, sometimes they're already doing home inspections and this is just something they're adding on. Um, I think Portland has over 150 assessors in the area, so finding an assessor is never a problem.
So they have like a list online or something that you go to?
And, and they have a list for the Portland program. And if we have a program ourselves, since we're partnering with Oregon Department of Energy, Oregon, ODO and Earth Advantage would work together to create a new list that would be certified for our program. And it's randomized, so no one assessment company is getting prioritized based on where they are on that list. It's randomized every time somebody clicks on it. Um, so the basic program, essentially this is the mandatory disclosure of the home energy report. So that's that score card, um, and score at or before time of listing. So when you're going to list your house publicly, right? So if you are passing off the deed of your house to your child, you already know that it's getting passed off to them. It's not publicly listed, you don't need to get a score. This is only if you're advertising the sale of your home. Then, then you need to go to home energy score, uh, bless you. Um, seller or home builder are the regulated parties, meaning that these are the people who need to get their home energy score done. A lot of times the Realtors will help them with this process. They're familiar with it. Um, sometimes they'll even pay for it out of their commission. And then the home energy report and score card must be displayed on all, displayed on all public listings and open houses. So you can see here, this is just a snap of a, a home from Zillow. And you can see there's the report at box that I highlighted there. You just have to have a URL to that home energy score. And that's easily done through the RMLS, the Realtor Database System. Um, and then when you're having an open house, you just have a short stack of those home, uh, home energy score cards at the open house for people to look at.
Could you just repeat the part you said about sometimes Realtors will pay for this out of their commission?
Yes, so that's not required by any means, but some Realtors just find it easier to do it for their home seller. They just think it's a simpler process, a lot of times similar with how Realtors have partnerships with contractors in the area. They just know who to go to, they schedule it, they get it done. Um, I talked to a few Realtors, they said that that's what they did. But, uh, there's also, you know, the home seller could schedule it themselves.
Do we know, um, I mean, new home, new construction has to do it too, right?
Yes.
So is new construction coming in, in Portland, coming in at 10s?
Uh, no, because Oregon State Building Code, um, isn't the, the, it's, it's still, it's, it's not bad. Oregon State Building Code is actually quite good when it comes to energy efficiency, but a 10 home would probably not be at the minimum state building code. And in Oregon, since we can't go above and beyond the state building code, we cannot require more energy efficient buildings. Um, so this is actually beneficial even for new construction. It doesn't recommend, um, adjustments based on, like, it doesn't recommend retrofits for new construction simply because they just built that house, right? But what it does is it still reflects those utility costs. So that way, even if it's a new construction, you know the estimated cost of your utility bills moving in.
It'll be interesting to go online and look at some new construction in Portland and see.
Now, now I'm curious how, what score average state building code requirements get you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Probably varies a lot by square footage.
Yeah. And then, um, so building types, so these are single-family detached homes, townhomes and row houses. So even if they're sharing walls, as long as they own from the floor to the attic, that space, then they need a home energy score. Stacked condos and apartments, they do not need a home energy score because you can't control what your neighbor does above or below you. Um, and then as long as it's listed as a residential property as well. And then, so the exceptions for this are things like mobile homes, detached ADUs, um, stacked condos, commercial properties.
Why detached, why ex, why accept detached ADU?
Because I believe it's the way that the listing is performed, that the ADU is not listed separately as a home sale, right? So when you're selling the house, it's, it's not included in that home's energy score.
Your ADU.
No, but I mean, it's, you know.
But don't they generally sell with the house?
Sure.
Yeah, so the, the main home would be assessed.
Shed out in the back.
And why, there was a thing in the materials about accepting houses sold in distress, like, oh, foreclosures and stuff, why?
So, um, so sale circumstance, so exemptions, so these are homes that, that do not require a home energy score. Um, it's usually because of indication of financial distress. So the bank either is processing that as a foreclosure or a pre-foreclosure or the home is unsafe to enter, be it condemned or about to be condemned. Um, I talked to Portland today about why, uh, foreclosures and other elements of financial distress were excluded. And it's, there's multiple reasons. For one thing, working with banks is fairly difficult in that administrative process. But then also there's the legality of who's considered the homeowner for the compliance and ordinance process. And whether or not the bank can be determined as the homeowner at that point or if it's still the home seller who is in the foreclosure process, are they required to, to facilitate the home energy score?
What if it's an outright bank-owned property?
That right now, I believe it's, if it's being sold as a foreclosure, pre-foreclosure or the list of other exemptions that was on there, then they do not need to go to home energy score following Portland's program.
So I get why you can't go after the person being foreclosed on, but, um, and you can't get blood from a tourniquet. But, um, why, I don't know why we would treat banks any different than new home builders. Why would we treat banks any different than new home builders?
And I think part of the discussion Natalie had, there was, there was a fuzziness in, in the legal, in, there was a fuzziness in terms of that ownership that, and it, how do you, who's actually the owner?
So I have a solution to that problem.
In foreclosure.
And I, I will read this real quick from, this is from, um, Portland on what, their exemption process and, and, um, Wendy Kolfken, who's our, their current Home Energy Score Program manager. She says that her understanding is that the exemption causes were recommended by the Portland Metropolitan Association of Realtors. After reviewing them with our legal team, we determined that these were reasonable exemptions based on the financial complexity and distress of the situation. Uh, my further understanding is that in a foreclosure sale, most of the, often the home is being auctioned for less than the praiseworthy value of the home in order to satisfy the existing debt. I don't know that we can draw a clear line to the bank as the homeowner and therefore liable under the ordinance. And we don't have an interest in telling home sellers in the situation that they need to come up with a home energy score.
Got it. So I have the exact same, and, and so there, there's something I've thought about in this that cuts to both of those. Another thing in the report talked about how there's only 65% compliance in Portland, right? When you buy a house, you end up with that huge stack of papers that you spend an hour and a half signing and none of which you read because you would be there all your life if that's what you were going to do.
Except Lisa, Lisa read it all.
I took two days before my closing, I read them.
But the average person. Doesn't, right? However, every single one of those pieces of paper is required, right?
So, so the, the document at the time of sale, some programs do a home energy score requirement of time of sale. Uh, the problems with programs like that is that, once that buyer information, the transparency and the consumer, uh, promotion and protection, that's a little bit lost because you're already at the final document signing. An option that some communities around the nation are considering is having a time of listing requirement and then having paperwork at the time of sale saying that I saw this home energy score report and a check mark. The hard part is working with the title companies to make sure that that is being complied with. Um, and I don't know, I haven't looked into that process because we've been looking into Portland's process. Portland is interested in it as well.
All kinds of ridiculous things.
Right.
That, that seems like a way more valuable thing to have to comply with than nine tenths of the crap that's in that stack of paper.
But who's going to enforce it? And how, where is the staff time going to come?
I was just going to add, as much as I, I don't disagree, I've been listening tonight. This is, uh, I think my short answer is I worked on this for two years and I couldn't even get it to this stage uh, in Salt Lake. So I really appreciate how hard the staff has pushed and how they have come to sort of a mediated ground. All of these are great ideas, um, but I really don't want us to start our own program because I'm nervous about what that means and what it looks like. What I would love is if you want to do a letter of support to Portland or, or to the State Department of Energy that says, these are the things as you're looking at amendments to the program that we'd really like you to consider so that it is more in alignment with where we think it would be useful for us to go. That would be ideal. But I just don't want staff to hear this as direction to try and start modifying a program that's not ours, that we're just adopting into the city. Does that make sense? I know that you.
Oh, I hear you.
I know you.
I, I understand all the words you use.
Well, that's good, you know, that's a step. Because if we could have that path, this is too small of a staff to run the program. Um, because if we could on that path, this is too small of a staff to run the program. Uh, so I, I think that, uh, in comparison to where I was two years ago, well, four years ago now, when we first started talking about this, um, there's been a lot of balancing across the country to try and get this program into place, into all sorts of communities of all sorts of sizes. Uh, originally when we were looking at it, we were actually requiring blower tests. So we were actually looking at blocking up all the windows, all the doors, seeing what the energy efficiency was. We received so much pushback that there was no way for, we were being threatened at the state legislature that they were gonna kill the program. Like it was, it's been a balancing act for a long time. I makes, I agree that'd be really nice if they looked at the energy bills to understand both the duality, you know? You've got, yes, all these improvements on the home, but you also have how it's functioned. And I think that having both of those pieces of information would be really helpful as you're setting a score. I love, everything Natalie has said and everything Peter has said, has been years of compromise to try and get a program that doesn't get defeated in states. So, um, y- yes, I agree with you, yes, I'd love to see a more rigorous program. Yes, I think that it's worth us asking the state to consider those improvements so that when they're running the program we buy into, it has those components, I would just ask that we not try and do it without the state on this, and I think that they're interested. So I don't think you're going to be preaching to a, a big wall in front of us. Is that fair Natalie?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Especially if Portland got that from the home builders, um, or, did you say the realtors?
The Realtor Association.
Well, and I'm hearing this is a state issue.
So, I mean, this.
They took on our program, the, so for us, what we're buying into is, I believe, the state program, or is it, yeah?
So it's the state program, which is using a federal methodology, but the scorecard and everything, and a lot of the framework is modeled after Portland's because it was successful, has, has been, been successful so far.
But they can change it, yes.
But your, I mean, your concerns were about the, our own code and whether or not to exempt certain, s, you know, certain sellers.
Right.
And that has nothing to do with the state program, I mean, we can, we can, we, we don't, we, our code can.
That's fair, no, that's fair, if you, I, yeah.
Yeah.
That's fair.
So there, I, there, there are certain compliance things that we, we could certainly make adjustments to in terms of, you know, I think Portland right now has a ninety day compliance period, we can adjust that, that compliance period down to, to reflect closer to what the market is and, and we can make sure that our fines match what our fines are for, for other code related violations. And then certainly we could look at some of the exemptions, but it does become difficult in, in, in some respect in terms of, of spending time and, and getting banks to comply with, uh.
Right, who's gonna do that?
To start sending them bills.
Yeah, I, I mean, we.
Tim will be there.
It, it's, it's.
Another hard part with, with the foreclosure process.
They don't sell the house because they can't, you know, ma, because they can't comply with this.
Well, they can sell, they can still sell the house.
To the state thing, that's where, where I've been wanting to require it on the title, as part of the title, um, or the, whatever you call that.
And as I mentioned, we'll be participating in like a, a technical working group as these programs around the state, uh, continue. Um, so these are the types of suggestions I can bring them. For the compliance aspect, when it comes to banks, um, the way, I'm not gonna get too in the weeds, but the way we check for compliance is literally browsing through listings. And we are constrained by the contact information on those listings. So stuff like, um, foreclosures, I was even looking at Zillow today, they don't tell you what bank is selling that house. They don't tell you even who the foreclosure agent is. Um, so it would extend staff time just for me to have to dig and, as well as Tim, to have to dig and find out who's responsible for those listings um, and how to engage them in that process. I'm not opposed to exploring that, um, it would just, it would take some time to figure out the best.
That was why I said if it was attached to title process, if they had to prove at the sign, time of the sale, that they had done this thing in order to just sell the house, right?
But we find out, I mean, okay, so yes, they get to sell the house, but then we find out who the owner is once the sale actually goes through. So we get that information and then we can enforce.
But the thing is you can't, you can't enforce the home buyer, right? It's the home seller at the time of listing who needs to have it, once they move.
You find out who the seller is.
Once it sells.
If you have the information on the ti, with the title company at the end.
Is that not always available from the county assessor?
Of course it is.
Isn't it kept up, I mean, when the bank, when it's foreclosed and it's.
Well, sort of, that's actually how I. They do a poor job of it.
I am obviously also catching up as we're talking about this, this today is the work session. So what I prefer, instead of worrying about it right now, is just that you give direction to staff to look into it a little more, see if there's a way that we could do it for the bank sale items. Are there any others that aren't currently being captured that you want us to bring back?
Yeah, I don't like the, I mean, I, I, to me, the, the exemptions need to be more focused on equity. So the low income, you know, the, the person that we can, we can absolutely say lives there is gonna be the most harmed by a two hundred and fifty dollar requirement, you know, that, that they, that they do this. I, I don't like the city manager may, exa, you know.
Oh, in the code?
Yeah, in our code, we can control that, and I think that we, you know, if, if, you know, I do think that I wanna be responsive to the, you know, my, for example, in my own experience, I bought my home from the original owner. She was selling off, I mean, she tried to sell me her sewing table to make extra money because she was on a limited, you know, fixed income. She was not gonna be able to come up, I mean, I bought a bunch of stuff from her that she had, you know, that I have no interest in because she was looking for ways to make money. And we're not talking a lot, a lot of money, we're talking about a thousand dollars. If she were to be hit with this, that would not have worked out for her, that would have been a major problem. And, you know, and getting back to the whole idea of like transparency and, and who should put the bill on this, you know, when I did my, say, I was required to, to do that home inspection. The seller wasn't required to do the inspection and that's a safety issue. So, I mean, as I'm looking at this, I re, I am really concerned about some of the equity points that were brought up, um, in, in the letter that we received. Because I do think that that's, that's a place that we, we do control that.
So.
We can make those except, exemptions.
And I'm just making sure I'm following this correctly, so we had talked about having, I think a thousand dollars set aside, just knowing that the size of the program in comparison. We didn't have a, I don't believe we had a litmus test in there as to what constituted, did we, was it thirty percent or sixty?
That's for subsidizing it, but I'm saying, you know, we don't, do we have to require it across the board? Can we have a, you know, not applicable, I mean, can there, can, can there not be a place for someone to put on their listing, it, you know, in a, you know, in, instead of, you know, you don't, you don't have that URL, you have a designated, a certification from the city that this home was not required to have an, an energy score.
So we, we didn't look at it from that, we, we didn't look at it that way, we looked at it that the city would pay if you qualified for low income assistance for your utility bill, for example, that's, that's the, what we have now, that you would qualify for a free home energy score.
I, I mean, I, I would like to see, I mean, the, I guess the benefit of maybe running our own program would be that we'd have an assessor and we'd have control over where that money is going, you know, so there are, like, there are a hundred assessors out there in, in the Portland market who are doing this kind of job. Where's that money going? It's not getting pumped back into a program to help homeowners actually make the improvements on their homes. And I understand that there are financing opportunities out there, but, you know, not everybody's gonna qualify for that or have the upfront money to be able to do those things, or have the equity in their home to be able to do those things. So there's still gonna be a lot of people left in the lurch, who are gonna be required to do this. You know, DIYers who haven't been, you know, who don't have the paperwork to show that they've insulated their homes and who's, who are now getting a ding of maybe six percent on the, on the sale price of their home, who would have a higher score if, if they could show that they actually had made those improvements.
Yeah, so there's no, there's no devaluation on a house for poor energy efficiency. So that six percent was a premium, so if you show that you're certified energy efficient, they're selling for above.
Okay, so the house next door to you sells for six percent higher even just because they have the same exact, you know, virtually identical houses, that to me is a six percent ding. If I'm selling on the same day and my neighbor gets to sell their house for six percent higher than I do, I'm gonna see that as a ding.
So I, uh, the question really, it is a straight policy question. We can exempt, that's, I think, I don't have concerns about that. It does mean that fewer homes will be in the program. So my question is simply, this is one of those places where we have two goals, I need to know which one I'm picking.
Well, I, I wanna say another option to consider is, so Portland does for their low income assistance, they are required to get a home energy score, but they work through the Community Energy Project, which is a nonprofit that works with low income members of the community and they offer a lot of incentive programs. So they take those dollars and they actually are able to turn it into an incentive program to incentivize the retrofits or offer free heat pumps or free energy efficiency upgrades. There is that possibility and I've gone and talked to them, uh, as a possibility to work for us, for a contractor, for a low income assistance. Um, and we're still exploring that as one of the details for how we would do this. I think the concern is if we have low income sellers who are moving out of their home, there's the potential that a low income buyer is the one moving in and they're not gonna have that energy efficiency information if we exempt them from a score. And that could be critical based on the utility costs estimated per year, uh, factoring into why they wanna buy that home. That's something that we're exploring as a reason, but definitely equity is something we wanna be concerned with. Portland briefly looked at their compliance over the last year to see if lower selling homes were disproportionately affected by this program and they didn't see any compliance difference between a higher cost home and a lower cost home, uh, just through compliance, meaning that they're not getting fined, they're not being the ones notified for not complying. So that, we are looking at it and that is something that we do wanna be very careful about and concerned about.
Justin also just had one other thought.
I, I just had a, a, a thought that identifying houses as being exempt because you have a low income seller, uh, could also put them at a competitive disadvantage in the market. So having something on the RMLS that says exempt could trigger lower offers for their homes and things like that. So you, you don't wanna, you don't wanna scarlet letter.
And, and I really, I really think it's an equity issue to not give that information to people who are potentially buying a house that is selling for less than market rate or what have you, because those are the people who are most going to need to have energy efficiency improvements. Those are the people that are going to most need the opportunity to wrap additional costs, like improving the furnace, which will make their monthly bills much lower and more affordable, to wrap that cost into the home purchase price and that point of purchase with the bank when they're working out their mortgage and everything. So I actually think it is an equity issue to not give them that score.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's a, a much prefer, I, I get where you're going and I understand it and I agree, but I think it's much pref, more preferable if, if we had a program where we just paid for those.
I also.
Or can we get realtors to.
Right, that's.
Pay for them or ta, and then take it out of the proceeds or whatever, yeah.
How would we, yeah, how, we couldn't codify that though.
I mean, for a Realtor, a couple hundred bucks isn't gonna make that much difference.
Peter, what's the threshold for use of the fund?
Right.
So our, our initial thought was to, that a, a seller, if they qualified for a low.
Utility rate.
Assistance, utility rate, that they would qualify for that. And that's based off of the, I think the Clackamas County, uh.
It is.
Income, income, uh, piece, uh, there, Portland has a whole bunch of other, uh, ways that they, people qualify, everything from, uh, if you're, if you're on food stamps, if, uh, there was probably six or seven different ones. And we certainly consider some of those other pathways to low income assistance as well.
Yeah.
Uh, we had one in place already and we wanted to, uh, try to keep things simple. Uh, we have about a hundred and eighty residents right now that qualify for low income assistance on, on their utility bills. We didn't think it was a big number, there was gonna be a.
Qualify or who participate in?
Who participate, that have qualified and participated in it. Uh, so we didn't think that there was a, a whole lot more than that, that we would, you know, there's, there's a limited amount of people selling their homes at any given time. So.
Right.
But we, we can certainly look at those different opportunities.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm good with, I'm good with that, I just think that, you know, that, that we def, I mean, I, I definitely want to, you know, somehow find a way to provide assistance for the low income seller.
Mm-hmm.
Um, whether that's through a program or an exemption, I, I, I understand your points really well. Um, but I do wanna just really, it, where did we leave the whole exemption on foreclosures thing? Because I don't think that we should just simply.
We're gonna look at it and come back to you with, with more information, I just, we don't have enough info.
So ba, so basically the general direction, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we don't want to make life easier for banks than it is for everybody else.
No, I totally agree with you, um, and we'll get a little more info. Uh, just to make sure I close the other loop, I do wanna make sure that it's not that you have qualified, it's that you would qualify. So we should also make sure that in the application, there is a full application for the utility, uh, forgiveness program? Just, or the reduction program, just to make sure that people who haven't known or participated in doesn't mean that they're negated from participating in this.
And that's actually a discussion that we had at the, the forum, that we would have an application form that had a box that you checked off, hey, you know, you could also qualify for a low income assistance if this is your.
So the, the, the list that's on page WS ten C, there's four items. I mean, those seem like, it made sense as, as the parameters for, I mean, in here it's talked about, it would be, uh, the exemption and the requirements, but if that was the parameters we use for a program.
Yeah, so, so this code, we, we kinda modeled this code off of Portland's and the process that they use. So discussing with our finance department especially, and our IT, about how we would wanna manage sensitive documents coming in and out from, uh, low income sellers or those community members. Um, we identified using the existing utility assistance program, simply because there's already a pathway for handling that information within the city. That's something we can explore if we do wanna broaden the exemptions for, or the, sorry, the, the waivers for low income for free home energy scores. Uh, it's just something I wanna continue the discussion with our finance and IT to make sure we're, we're keeping that information safe and secure.
I also just wanna let you know, we're about twelve minutes over on this and we have a couple of other big conversations. Is there a concern in there that you wanna make sure we address when we bring back the final document, Mayor, or are you comfortable?
Well, just to make sure that we are getting all the people who are in a tight spot. Right, I, I, you know, I'm trying to imagine the situation where they wouldn't qualify for our utility thing, but they're still on the bitter edge.
What we may wanna do based on that is I know that Councilor Faulkner had a little concern about, uh, city manager's discretion. But if we make it, we're, if you qualify under the utility automatically, but still giving this role the chance to consider outline factors, then I think that you have protections moving forward that get to your goals.
I, maybe we just, I maybe, I guess my concern might, it might be helped if, um, let's talk more about that.
Sure.
But also, um, making it so that the code reads that, that, um, that the note, you know, under maybe the enforcement or, you know, somewhere where we actually include, uh, that, that the city, you know, that, that, that notice will, um, include information about exemptions.
Yep, totally.
Yeah, because, I mean, even, you know, that, I guess like making it sort of, you know, discretionary, that the may part, you know, if a low income person, you know, doesn't go to the code and read the code, they're not gonna be aware unless it's included in that notice, so.
Yeah, and we don't often have people come in who don't qualify for one, but would really benefit from having the exemption, but it does happen and that's why I wanna make sure there's at least some stopgap if there's a problem.
Cool.
Okay, I had a couple more questions, um, one was this compliance, so I just wanna make sure I understand it. So you random audit ten percent, non-compliant homes given ninety days to comply. The house is sold in, on day fifteen or twenty, but they still need to do the report and show they did the report, is that the idea?
So this is, this is Portland's program, essentially when the home is lis, at the time of listing is when they need to have the home energy score. So when you're checking compliance, you check the day of listing or that week of listing and see if they have the score, notify them of, uh, a non-compliance, and then yes, they have ninety days, and if the home sells within those ninety days, technically you can still, um, try to find the home seller. The hard part Portland is finding is once that person moves, they do not have that location, their address anymore. So it's difficult for them to enforce compliance once that home seller has moved away, um.
This is why it's gonna get baked into the title process.
And so, and so Portland, um.
Solves all those problems.
Uh, they also have the, the five hundred dollar fee after that ninety days and it's a hundred and eighty days, which is a very long window as well before another five hundred fee. And that is something that they have identified as an issue, being that the market doesn't match that compliance window. Talking to Tim, our code compliance coordinator, he also suggests that as a very broad compliance window. Um, but, um, this, the reason why we brought it as such is because it matches Portland's compliance schedule and we are open towards any sort of suggestions to change that.
How many, what are, what's the percentage of homes that are sold, you might not know this, I'm not expecting an answer. Um, how many so, homes are sold by agents or listed as for sale by owner? And I'm wondering about shifting gears entirely and making it so that, like, ma, making it the agent's responsibility who.
That'd be good to know.
I mean, if.
We can bring back info on it.
Yeah, that's a, that's an interesting concept.
Yeah.
Because if they're, if they're, usually they're paying for it anyway, then why wouldn't we be sending the notes to them? And to them that they have to.
Yes.
And that's a far, yeah, that's a far smaller pool to educate, right? Right?
I'm not, I'm not sure if, and actually we have a Realtor in the room, but I'm not gonna make her come up. Um, uh, I'm not sure if that's a state issue because they certify under state, I don't know, but we can look at it. Let's come back to you with some more information and I'm gonna cut this conversation off just because. And I'm going to cut this conversation off just because we are really over.
Okay, well, I have.
But did anybody else have a thought on that idea of?
Yeah, I think that's an interesting thing to explore.
What are your other two questions that we can come back prepared?
One is Portland's website says they did a report in the beginning of this year, and I could not find it for the life of me, but I would like to have a copy of that about the first year of the program. And second, I get the point of, you know, we need to keep the conditions, the things that are being evaluated general and consistent with Portland. I get that, that in terms of keeping the cost and keeping the, but it doesn't seem right to me that in this town where we've prioritized tree cover, that we're not going to count tree cover, and I think we really should think about counting tree cover.
And I think the issue, only issue I can see with that is that it's a federal methodology and that the federal methodology doesn't include it. We can look at other methodologies that might include it, but it changed the program.
Yeah, well, or a separate.
Or you could write a tree cover exemption in the code.
Or you can write something that puts something else on the title, right? So, you get your report and we ask for an additional programmatic function of, on top of your score, you have X percentage of coverage from. So, I think that there are ways we could talk about it, but let's look at it.
That's going to be, yeah, yeah, because I agree, it makes a big difference in the energy.
Thanks you too. This is great.
We'll follow up with some responses on some of those last questions here, because I think there's some, some larger difficulties there with some of those things.
And we can make sure that we include those into the packet for the next material so the public gets this.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up, we have dangerous building code updates, which will be presented by our building official and our code enforcement coordinator.
And council, and I'm going to say this to staff who really don't want to stay here late tonight, we do have to get into clothes by 5:30, so it's 11 minutes, just so everybody knows.
Do your best, auction your impression.
Yep.
I'm Samantha, building official here, so we'll just keep this really short. We updated code language, we did some semantics, some wordsmithing to make it a little more clear, but the main update that we did was there was a loop in the dangerous building code that when I mark something as do not occupy because it's in a dangerous state, if they board it up and make it non-occupiable, it can stay that way forever. There's nothing that makes them, compels them to do anything more. Our code allowed them to do that. So, the changes that Tim and I went through and made would, after a six-month period of me marking one do not occupy, then it would kick it into his code enforcement and run it through the code compliance.
Nuisance.
Nuisance code.
Nuisance code, abatement procedures.
So, that's the main change. The rest of it was more just cleaning up language. There was a couple sections where Tim and I both went, I have no idea what this means. So, we moved things around. There was a couple moves that Tim did where he said it just didn't make sense where it was at, and we moved it to a different section so that the code enforcement read better.
So, unfortunate that we only have a little minutes, because nothing to do with the work you guys did. I thought that was all good. This process, however, drew my attention to this piece of code, which I had never read before, and it's a mess. And it, you know, things like the health and safety of the property, because when you read the sentence the way it's actually written, that is, that is a thing, right?
Yeah, this needs Justin's lawyerly eye to spend a couple hours. I sent him some comments, I sent him some comments last night, that would be content neutral, but would clear up a lot of bad language in here. There's a lot of.
There is a lot of that, and there's, there's content intent in here that I have concerns about. For example, when you get down to dangerous buildings, item three, whenever the stress, sorry, WS 16. Whenever the stress in any material member or portion thereof due to dead or live loads is more than one and one-half times working stress or stresses allowed in the currently adopted Oregon specialty codes for a new building similar structure. So, you could have a building that literally nothing changed about the building, other than the code that enforces on it, and it is now a dangerous building when it wasn't a dangerous building before. That's literally what that says.
To a point. I mean, we have the, the low loads that we have in the codes haven't changed that much, so if you have a four-by-12 member, it's going to be the same as it was 20 years ago, that, that, unless you have, you go from like number two grade to structural steel grade or structural.
Well, I'll give you an example. Some, the house, the house that I sold was a, it's now 107 years old. When the back porch was built, the, the members were four-by-fours. That would totally not.
True four-by-fours.
Yes.
Yes.
Now, when I, I was needing to rebuild it and I was looking into it, and I was going to have to go with a minimum of four-by-sixes for the exact same roof. So, therefore, that, that porch no longer met code. So, technically speaking, somebody could walk in and, let's say, they had kept it in great shape and all the wood was still in great shape, and in 107 years, no one had died because of that structure, it still could be marked as a unsafe or whatever it's called, dangerous building, simply because the code changed.
It could, I guess, and we could do that. We would not.
I wouldn't ever expect you to do that, nor would I expect, you know, the people that work for the city currently to do that. What I always think about when I'm looking at code is, in the worst-case scenario with the worst possible counsel and the worst possible.
Damn, just a bunch of buildings that people lived in.
So, the mother document of this particular thing is an international, put together by International Code Council. All of these are part of that document, really, and, and, and there wasn't, yeah, we didn't create this out of thin air. This was something that was adopted just in title, and then Tom Larson, previous building official, brought it in-house in part here. So, all the definitions of the dangerous building is a copy straight out of the book by the International Code Council.
And that is the organization that does all of our codes. So, all the state codes, all the building codes, all the energy codes.
This one was 22 years ago. Is this still what it looks like today? Is this still what their model code looks like today?
I'm pretty sure, yeah.
But I'd want to know. I'd want to see that.
I would want to know too, and here's the thing, you know, as I've done this for six years, well, actually, starting on planning commissions, reading code, very often, code is written from the perspective of people that have money, to be really blunt. And people who don't have money and who are barely scraping by and barely keeping the wheels on their life, a lot of this code would destroy their life. I mean, the potential is there for things that, they're, they're putting up with something in their house. They don't live in a crappy house because they want to live in a crappy house. They live in a crappy house because that's all they can afford. And the codes are written in such a way that they could literally lose their house or be told you can't live in this house anymore, where it is definitely safer for them to live in this house than it is for them to live on the street. Part of it has to do with it being able to meet the dangerous building from the, from the essence of the top paragraph of this, of the definition. Right, but there's stuff in here, like, if, if the flooring is, whenever the walkway surface of any aisle, passageway, stairway, or other means of exit is so warped, worn, loose, or torn, otherwise unsafe to, as so as not to provide safe and adequate means of exit, by whose definition, safe and adequate means of exit, that could easily, I mean, there are hundreds of houses in this town, I guarantee it, that have flooring that qualifies for that, and should we have the wrong building inspector or the wrong code compliance person could be used to remove poor people. It's just, I think this requires.
And Justin did look at us, with us. When we, and I understand what you're saying, I understand that it's, you know, if I wasn't here, it could be somebody else's interpreting this code. When we're going through this, we're looking at it with that eye of, if this isn't something that somebody could die from, we're not going to enforce, we're not going to kick somebody out of their house. I mean, we just wouldn't do that. And I think anybody coming into this that, that is ethic at all, ethically at all, is not going to do something like that. You know, my, my certifications themselves wouldn't allow me to do something like that. That's, you know, you're looking at it from a standpoint of, these are people's lives that you're affecting. So, when I'm looking through this code, it's, I'm not doing it to kick somebody out. I'm doing it because if something happens, it's going to be worse off for them than it would be if they were, if they were living on the streets. It's going to be, somebody's going to die, that stairway is going to pull away when somebody's trying to get out of there, and somebody's going to end up collapsed in that stairway. And I've had those, where the stairway, the exit stairway has pulled away from the building, and if I didn't have that code section in there, I wouldn't have anything to be able to enforce upon on that.
So, your feeling is that, that, what I'm hearing you say is that bad actors are culled from being building inspectors by right of the way you guys are trained.
No, I mean, there's still, there's going to be people out there that would still do it, but, you know, we're hired and fired by the.
Then you fire me.
Yeah.
But it's not you. I mean, it's not.
Yeah, I actually, no, no, I understand, but the, it's the city manager's job to assure that this is happening with ethics and values and all the things that we're talking about here tonight, and if that person is not willing to stand up. Having said that, Mayor, I am not, I'm happy to come back. I think that this is a substantially larger conversation, which is why we actually took this long to get it onto the council agenda, than we can get through tonight. So, we'll have to put it back forward, and I'm totally fine with that. I do want to talk very briefly about the fact that codes, we love that, we want them more stringent in some places, i.e. energy, and we want them less stringent in other places, and in many ways in the state, we just uphold them. In this, I want to be a little cautious that these were put into place because something bad happened. So, usually codes happen in response to something bad. So, for instance, when there was a fire in Florida a few years ago, I believe it was, several people couldn't get out the exits because of some structural issues, people died, we redid the codes to make sure that people don't die in that kind of situation. So, a lot of these have been responsive over 100 years. These have been responses to having slums, places where people were literally landlords, were owners, were treating their building so poorly and then renting these at a horrible rate without the amenities needed for human dignity in life, that we had to put things into place to stop that from happening. So, I, there's always a balance, happy to talk about that balance, but I think that it's the same discussion we just have. We all want to create a space of dignity and respect for all people, and we need to talk about what that looks like.
And it's, it's helpful to me to know that, sort of, to be reminded of the chain of command, that it would take you being a jerk, you being a jerk, and you being a jerk for there to be no recourse to keep someone in their house when it comes to a code, potential code violation.
Part of it also is, is that just because you have a dangerous building doesn't mean you can't fix the problem while you're still in your house. That's.
Assuming you can afford to.
Well, right, and, and. So, I mean, but, but to the one definition that you brought up, I don't know that that would be too difficult to do, or if we would declare that a dangerous building that would require vacation or demolition of the structure. What we're, what I'm currently running into right now as a code enforcement officer is houses that burned down or didn't burn down, and they're still there. And I can't, and I get in complaints from neighbors about, why haven't you done anything? It's been, it's caught on fire last August.
I have one on Stanley that I, I put do not occupy on a year ago, and I, they've boarded it up, it's secured.
Like I said, what you guys did with the code, that, that was good stuff. We're not trying to recreate the wheel, we're trying to make the, make the document better and add what we need to make the system move forward.
And, nope, we're going to cut it off because we're out of time. We are over by two minutes. Sorry, guys, we're over by two minutes. We have 28 minutes to go have an important conversation. Would you do me a favor, Mayor, and just let people know on air that we're probably going to come back a little bit late, so we'll probably start at 6:10 instead of 6:00?
Okay, we will be starting the regular session at 6:10, and immediately following this, we will be going into executive session pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute ORS 192.660 2E to deliberate with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. With that, we are adjourned in the work session. I look forward to future conversation. Thanks, guys.